That was a Chromebook because it was dirt cheap. All right, I would like to call this regular city council meeting to order at seven oh five. Would like to take a little call. Noted that all are present with the exception of councilman meets. We have no visitors in the gallery. Say our budget reasons.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next Cassie will sing it for us.
Singing the national.
Star Spangled Banner.
No public, no public comments. Any solicitations to the agenda, any additions?
Yeah, I would like to talk about snow removal a little bit.
What?
Snow removal.
Okay.
More and specifically in regards to, I think this office was working on this a little bit this week, but the sidewalks down Main Street.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, so we'll take this part slow. Feel free to pop in since you have more experience with the Creighton, but any items that you guys saw that needed to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? In full disclosure, there was some edits grammatical, what have you, done to the minutes, but structurally it was all the same. So we're good with leaving it as is?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Okay, we've talked about doing this in the past. I was wondering if there's interest to basically formally establish council members on the different committees that need to have work done throughout the year.
Yeah.
And those that I put on the agenda, the budget, employee handbook, cemetery and buildings, meaning kind of focused on what buildings need, what type of maintenance and updates and what have you. Just for lack of a better term, some oversight in those areas. So is there interest in doing that? I know there is for the cemetery.
Well, what scope, the cemetery, what is the scope of it?
It can only be two people, you know, so you can have, but kind of to come up with ideas of what to do or put things so they can present a report, if you will, to the whole council of this is what we'd like to see, the cemetery, the direction we'd like to see the cemetery going.
You're, um, there was not an issue, but there was, they wanted a board. Where does that stand? Is that along with a cemetery board?
No, because for right now, without having our, our ordinances, yeah, our ordinances disbanded the cemetery board.
Right.
So within our ordinances, the codes say that they fall, the operation of the cemetery falls on the council. So I just wondered if there were two people that wanted, specifically to the cemetery, two people that wanted to kind of take that mantle off and have that.
I'd volunteer for that.
For the cemetery?
Cemetery and I also would volunteer for the buildings.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I should have added this. I'd like to talk about the leaks at the memorial halls.
Okay.
I'm happy enough to stay on budget, but I'll repeat what I've said before. I, I don't know that I feel like I'm that much of a budget expert. I've just been doing it the longest, so.
So, well, let's, let's do this and I can address that, so I'm sorry.
So we're supposed to have two people in cemeteries?
We can't, yeah, we can have up to two people on each one. Because that way you two can have a conversation about things that are coming up and you don't have, you're not, you're not.
The PMA.
Quorum, you're not violating the OPMAs.
I can volunteer this cemetery as well. I don't mind talking about Creighton.
But you have to bring a lawnmower with you.
You have two of them. I've seen you use it. Okay, um, what was the other one I had? Handbook, unless you guys just want to keep hammering out the handbook. Collective group.
Honestly, my opinion, I think another workshop, I think we've, we've made a lot of.
Yeah, we.
Forward head steam on that, so I think we can probably.
We can just, yeah, because I've got, as you see on the, I want to set another, schedule another time.
I don't think we actually have that much, that many more meetings. Again, part of it will be just defining a stopping point. We're not probably going to be hammering on that until everyone's completely satisfied. We already got PTO changed, so I think I could pass certain revisions right now and feel good enough about it for this year.
Yeah, and I talked to the attorney, he's, he's got a nepotism clause that he feels would work well for the city for the size. So to fix that confusion. Okay, so we'll leave that up. Okay.
So that, I said I could do budget, isn't, if anyone wants to do that with me. And then Creighton said buildings and I think he's alone on that one.
Yep.
I'm not doing budget.
Well, you know, Chris isn't here, so that means.
I nominated Chris?
Yeah.
Boy, he just signed up for the last stuff, didn't he?
I've seen myself get volunteered like that, so.
Well, in all these, the committees, I mean, I'm guessing the answer is yes. You put together this list after consideration, but are there any other committees that should be there?
Up to you. I mean, those are the ones that I kind of were just sat down and brainstormed and thought, these are the items that pretty consistently are coming up.
All right, and for clarification, the buildings committee, are you looking at just what we own here? Or is it, how far are the tentacles? Is it rental property like the Johnson?
City owned properties.
Yes.
So. Well, we don't have to do it all tonight. I mean, it's just, we got some groundwork started, so I'm good with that. Unless you guys really do want to nominate Chris.
I guess maybe we, I would like you to explain the parameters of what this committee is going to do. Are we just going to, if someone comes with a complaint, go see the committee? Or are we gonna try to be somewhat proactive in what we should do instead of reactive?
That's what I'm, that's what I have in my head.
Okay.
You're not, you're not the pincushion. That's my job.
Yeah.
Like maybe go out and diagnose or observe leaky roofs or something like that?
Yeah.
That type of thing?
And, and, you know, bring it.
Falling down.
One of it is just bringing it to our attention, you know, just having people kind of focus on certain aspects of the city. Because our public works can't be everywhere and they're, they're looking at the same thing every single time and.
And I don't want to be, well, I should not and legally can't direct them to do anything anyway.
Yeah, so, no, it's.
I mean, I think as far as the cemetery is concerned, one of the primary things would be exploring and trying to find a basis for a five person board again.
Exactly, and then.
Chris maybe just have one member of the council on that board and the other four be. I think the council, if we're going to own it, as long as we're still owning it, should have at least some say in it.
Well represented.
Yeah, we can dig out the original ordinance that created the original cemetery board. Because it did have language in it like that.
Oh, yeah, some.
A member of the council and.
I know that both you and I struck out trying to find people who would say yes to the cemetery board, but I believe Chris said, or was it Janice? Janice might have said.
Janice was definitely interested.
That they, that they had some other people too, so we might be closer to the five that we would need than we've been.
So. Okay, uh, and I don't think this requires a public hearing because these are the fees. But I sent them out to you guys and this is a document that I started the last time we went through it so we can start seeing when the revisions were because the forward was never really documented when they changed the last time.
Right.
So, uh, but I just thought we should be looking at this at least annually to. I've already heard that, you know, memorial halls, should we be increasing what's charged to use the memorial hall? We'll have a garbage hearing in two weeks, three weeks' time on the 12th. But, I mean, here's, here's a print of all.
Okay, I saw that and I have it on too. Anybody want to see that?
I.
I see, so a couple of things, and this is not material to the actual rates, but thank you for the revision date column. I think that's excellent. I don't know when the last time the dog stuff was set. I do remember doing the cemetery. I don't think we've done gravel or dirt during my time. I think we probably should change those rates. I know we, didn't we do print copies last year?
Two years ago, I think.
Or was it two years ago? I don't, we can look in minutes to find exactly when, but I know, I know that was recent. Memorial Hall rental, I think all of these were done since 2020. Freedom of Information Act request, we did that, I think, last year.
That, that's when I created this form.
Yeah, and there's two of the items in FOIA have a date of December 2023 and the first two do not. So standardizing that date across water has been a long time. Connection, sewer connections, we did that, garbage. Delinquent bills, I think, didn't we adjust? Or maybe it was just the involuntary shut off.
We talked about it, but I don't think we ever decided.
Yeah, we might not have actually changed it. Low income, we haven't changed that. I don't think I even saw that on rate sheets until last year. We found that one buried in ordinances. Nuisance, we certainly did that. That was coming out of the work David did and looking at the, looking at the ordinances. So anyways, I know that's not material to the rates of this, but I just wanted to add my feedback in terms of there's a few more dates we can probably try to put in there, but. You're specifically wanting to review what aspect at these rates?
Well, the, I will tell you this, that now that we are enforcing the water utility bills, the turn off and turn on is, and it's for some people, it's rather frequent. So I'll say this, any, any fee change that's made is going to impact probably those people who are.
Delinquent.
Consistently.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to be repeat people.
How, how do we collect that late delinquent?
We just add it to their, it gets added to the bill. Hi Joe.
Hi, Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, we just add it to the utility bill.
And there's no problem with that with everything else we run into? I mean, is it legal to do that?
Yeah.
Oh, so we're fine that way?
I mean, just about every utility will have a fee for being delinquent.
Right, they have to come down and pay off the bill before you turn it back on, correct?
Especially if you get turned off, you definitely pay to have it.
Turned back on.
Yeah, let a vista turn off your light, Chris, and go and see what the fee is to get it turned back on.
Yeah.
What happened to the, for a short time there, we were, somebody'd make arrangements to make payments.
And that's still going on. I mean, yeah, this is where, I mean.
They just don't pay?
Yeah, there was at least two that got turned off here in the last week or so.
So are you specifically angling for an increase in that rate?
I'm just saying if there was an area that could see some, some changes, mostly to encourage compliant to pay your bill.
Well, no late fees, what are they, thirty-five?
Late fees are five dollars.
On, on like your charge card and bank stuff, are they twenty-five, thirty-five?
Geez, it was thirty-five when I was in my twenties. It was this on too frequently. I haven't seen it in a while. I think if you read the disclosures, I think they go up to thirty-nine or something like that on the credit card bill.
So shut off, turn on is fifteen dollars unless it's after business hours or on holiday, in which case it's a hundred, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Does that cover our expenses related to those activities?
Well, if we call one of our public works peoples to go out on the weekend or a holiday, it's, if I remember correctly, it's two hours mandatory that they get paid.
Right, but they're not getting paid fifty dollars an hour?
No.
So, I guess where I'm going with it is this. If a person's already struggling to pay their water bill, I don't know that an extra fee on top of it is really going to change their behavior all that much. I don't find it to be deterrence. I think we should cover our costs. Like it certainly would not be wise for us to have to pay a two hour minimum of overtime to an employee to go turn it off and then not recover any of those costs. But in terms of going above that, trying to deter them and change their behavior, I think having their tap not turn on and their toilet not flush is really doing more than doubling those fees.
Okay. As I said, I just, I don't have any preconceived notion what these numbers should go to. I just wanted it on the agenda so this conversation happened, so.
Right.
And shutting it off, that just entails going to the meter and using the key and trying to lock it?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully as we get new ones, they'll actually have a lock we can put on because too many people have the tool, you know, which quite honestly they should in case they had to shut off their water. But regardless, yeah, it's, it's a five, ten minute job. You know, some of them are very deep, but there was a couple of them I shudder to think how we would ever shut it off because the meter is at least six feet down. Yeah, mine's maybe three and a half, four.
Any input from other cities in the county?
On, on fees?
Yeah, I mean, nobody, because I don't know.
And I didn't, and I didn't search.
Okay.
It's not like I'm trying to.
Right.
Match, you know, my neighbor. So, I mean.
I, I'm not opposed to trying to do more if we can think of other forms of deterrence. It's not that I'm writing the whole thing off, whatever we can do to, to deter. I just don't think this is deterrence.
Yeah, and, and you're probably right. And it's, it's the same people and when they pay, they pay in full and then we start the cycle again. So.
How long are we waiting to shut it off?
On average, four months.
Really, that long?
Basically, because at a hundred, especially right now, with, without garbage in there, about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars, a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month for the average bill.
Water, water, sewer, or water and sewer?
Water and sewer. And, you know, you, you miss a month, which happens, you know, you're up to two hundred and forty and, or two hundred and seventy. Those people I'm not really worried about. It's when they, so basically I put the threshold when somebody is over five hundred dollars or four months, that's when we're actually moving forward and that's the consistent.
Well, I'm just looking for consistency.
Yeah.
I mean, we just pick a hard path or standard operating procedure and follow it, you know, and don't deviate from it.
Basically, once the bill gets to five hundred dollars, that's, that's the trigger.
Would there be any value to the concept that if you're a repeat offender that that lowers? Because if a person's willing to just ride four months and pay it off when it suits them and then come back and to say if you've been delinquent more than two times in a year, the policy changes that you need to be up to date? Like, because we're trying to encourage consistency and so.
Certainly we could do that. I'm, from a simplicity point of view and, you know, following the track, who's, you know, who's on which, which level of naughty are you on?
Yeah, fair enough.
We just had to pick a reasonable number because I see people get up to three hundred dollars regularly and then they, they come in and they pay three fifty and have a credit and it's just not high enough on their priority scale.
Do they get a reminder notice or something like that?
Yeah, there's, as a matter of fact, there's a, I think there's a stamp or a sticker now that's going on. Those bills is, is a past due reminder, so. I mean, like you said, I, I mean, I really don't want to turn off anybody's water, I don't want that or not, but.
How about the absentee property owners? Or vacant, you know, I guess.
So those are shut off, we continue to try and get them and quite honestly, I would have done it today except for I couldn't get to the county office in time. But I've got four or five means that we'll be placing. And the criteria on those is those houses are vacant.
Right, well, these are houses that somebody in California or New York owns.
Nobody's in them.
Yeah, not rented anymore and they're just vacant.
One of them is on the market for sale and they don't pay the bill. But they, but they want the water on in case they show the house so somebody can turn on the water. But at this point, the water's not on, so.
Yeah, we don't have a pay as you go plan.
No. So anyway, again, we can say that we. There's the list. Anytime you guys want to see it or, or, you know, or want to bring it up.
Well, appreciate that, you know. The garbage, well, that's a different one, I think.
I guess the other thing that I would note with low income. I did come across that ordinance and I forget when that low income stuff was put into place. Those rates haven't probably been touched in a really long time. So there's a couple of observations here. One is that the way this reads, I'm not sure if the rates in the second column are representing discount or total amount paid. And then there seems to be some variations because eighteen thousand dollars or less is listed as eleven dollars. And then in the next line, waters.
Yeah, that was, and I can tell you because I've looked at it, that's the amount of the discount.
Okay.
The total bill, that's, that's eleven dollars off the bill, that's thirty dollars off the bill.
Didn't we get away from doing that back when Nathan?
No, we didn't. No, because I, we didn't, well, I can only speak for myself. We, I didn't know that low income, there was even a low income discount for the first couple of years.
Well, yeah, there, there was, but I do remember there was some, that was, uh, because I think Lincoln County come up, there was some kind of rural resource or there was some kind of outreach program.
Yeah.
That they weren't going to do that anymore. People that needed that were going to be channeled over there and, and do that number. But I don't remember if it was a, a state mandated thing or what it was, but I remember talking about it.
Do we know that we're required to have such a thing in place and have it be up to date?
I have no idea. This, if I find the, if I find the part of the code and look at the ordinance, I guarantee it predates all of us. I mean, it's.
Right.
You know.
By many years.
Well, what I speak of is that there was different rates, the seniors or low income people. And there was a threshold they had to meet and they were getting reduced water rates. But there was, I'm sorry, I fail to remember. Because it's, I mean, it seemed like a big thing at the time, but not obviously big enough, but. Rural Resources took, kind of took over that. Does, does that ring a bell with you?
No, but I do know, yeah, I do know that they do have specific programs to assist with that and I can do some checking with them tomorrow and, you know, kind of find, I, I know that there is a specific formula for identifying and.
When somebody's struggling, we, we refer them to Rural Resources.
Okay, I was going to say.
Oh, yeah, we, that's when somebody's just struggling, that's the first place we sell them. And we fairly frequently will get a check. So.
And they've helped a lot of people. We worked really hard. There wasn't a presence in Lincoln County and there's an office in Davenport now and the three of us county commissioners worked really, really hard to get that presence. And we are pushing as many people as we can to, to, you know, keep that program going here. So, yeah, anytime you can push them through, that'd be awesome.
But is it true that this, that seniors or the disabled have no income requirements upon it?
I would have to read it. I'm not familiar with it. I've not delved into the, the billion and the different.
Because I believe it's low income or seniors or disabled, so you could pick. I'm not going to look at any person's direction because I'm not qualified for that.
I score. I use as much water as anybody in this town. I'm all looking at.
This, this could definitely be one of those later on in our schedule. We're going to schedule a workshop to do some code and ordinance reviews. And this might be one of those topics that would be.
And does the slash mean low income and/or, or?
Yeah, I don't.
It really doesn't explain anything.
I don't know what the relevance necessarily, it like. I don't know what the relevance necessarily, it like, if you're low income, you're low income regardless of if you're thirty or you're seventy. If you're low income, you're low income whether you're disabled or you're abled, so I can only assume that that's saying that. You can be low income or you could be a senior because I know I have been approached in town by people who. I I would assume and to my knowledge wouldn't qualify for the low income part, but they were inquiring about senior rates.
And how do you, how do you verify disabled? So.
I'm going to guess based on that terminology being put into, you know, typed into here, that's that would indicate how old. That ordinance would have been put into the books. I'm gonna guess it was probably the seventies or eighties.
I don't know.
And if it hadn't been adjusted since that time, what was three thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollars in the seventies in today's money?
You know, it says eighteen thousand, but I've seen some. Not literature, but some, some documents stating up to twenty, you know, twenty-five thousand or less. I mean, all that threshold has changed, fluctuated.
And if we are going to give some kind of a discount, it shouldn't be a fixed monetary discount, it should be percentage based. Because there's no reason why that, like, that shouldn't, these, these numbers should be tied to some kind of a federal or state determination of poverty line. And the discount percentage should be fixed because there's no reason why we should be revising this in order to keep it up to date year over year.
You know, again, I think it would, it had something to do with determining who's low at all. I mean, if they're having problems with it, they were supposed to go to rural resources and they're picking up the tab.
There is a formula if you're thirty percent under, you know, uh, your median or fifty percent. And yeah, depending on those programs, there there is a formula that they follow and it's real specific.
What do they bring in a tax return or something to prove it? Or I mean, what do they?
No, I really don't know, so I'm sure that they do have to verify. I've been, yeah, it is based on a percentage though of of standard median household income.
Oh, it would have been two thousand nineteen and twenty, that was when. We taught, we were in another building for sure.
I think after getting my latest property taxes, I might. Apply for eighteen thousand or less.
Which disability are you gonna go after?
All of them, check out the boxes. Okay, well.
End of the discussion.
Well, just the garbage rate, excuse me, um, garbage they have here. This is currently what? I haven't checked, this is currently what we're being charged, correct?
That's currently what. What Sunshine is charging, yes. And we'll, again, we'll be bringing that up on March twentieth or twelfth.
Kind of look forward to that one.
All right, should we move on?
Move on.
Okay. I have get sent out, this was not on the agenda like I had intended last term or last meeting, but here is. A resolution to remove the city from a state of emergency when well number three.
That was in the packet from last meeting.
It was, but here's a, here's a hard copy. We've had enough of them. I had a nice template that I could just copy.
Keep it handy.
Yeah, I think.
I got it.
Okay, you got it. Gavin, you have yours? Discussion, general, general discussion and action, okay.
Yeah, so and in case the question comes up, all the bills have, with that have been received and paid and reimbursed.
So you just need a motion to approve the resolution.
Just to take us out of that state of.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented. This concerning the state of the emergency.
Thank you, we have a motion on the table to. Pass resolution two fifty-nine, twenty twenty-five to remove us from a state of emergency. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, say aye.
Four zero. Four zero zero, four zero zero. Mister Mayor, did we need to vote or do anything on the city fees review?
Uh, I had it as an action item in case we needed to, since we really didn't, we we battered it around.
Okay. No, no changes.
No changes. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, schedule workshop to hopefully. Wrap the, uh, the wrap up and polish on the employee handbook. I thought that worked pretty well, doing it before the meeting before. Okay, so the next meeting will be a public hearing also.
We'll start at three o'clock.
So five o'clock again, five to six thirty?
Sure.
Do we wanna? Try to set a non-binding commitment that we'll just do like one more session and then. Pass what we can agree on, or is there an endpoint that we're looking to get to? Cause like I said, you you can keep hammering on it forever. Does anyone have any goals of anything else they're specifically looking to get through?
Well, like, we already, we talked about the vacation, the other one is, um, I just have one more item that we've kind of touched on it. And that's about all I could, that. Possibly two, but they they shouldn't be that big items.
Is to dig through from where we're at to the end and then just do one other.
Session.
Pass through. We can, if we can move along, we should be able to do that in one night and then put it to bed.
Yeah, sounds good.
When's our next council?
March twelfth.
Aren't we doing the sunshine thing then? Is that gonna be just at seven then? I don't have a problem with doing it at five o'clock on March twelve. In fact, I probably don't have a problem with any of it.
Lose the Lions Club, shindig.
On the fourteenth.
Fourteen. On Saturday, okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay. And then this is probably going to be something that is gonna be ongoing because our codes and ordinances need some cleanup. Um, and some revisions and some updates, so. I would like to schedule, it's not gonna be a one and done on that, so maybe an hour to start getting into it.
Code ordinance review, okay.
So I I will tell you, we are getting a, at least one query a week. About what kind of building could I put on this property? Amongst other things, because there's a couple of properties that are for sale that could be built on. And. I don't know that our current codes and our current zoning is maybe reflective of what the intent is.
So you mainly want to focus on our building codes?
Well, I'm just, I'm just pointing out one example. There's some, there's some other glaring examples where there's, there's things that are just out of date. But, but I think that kind of stuff, especially the building ordinances. Um, the zoning, I think, is relevant about looking it up. For example, right now, there is no, there's no requirement. For any kind of building permit for remodeling an existing structure. As long as you don't expand the footprint, there's no building requirement. There's no, you know, I'm getting questions all the time. I had to write a letter to somebody. Who bought a house and they were gonna be getting the, the mortgage company was requiring the roof to be replaced. Where did they get the building permit? To do roof replacement, because that's commonplace in most. And ours is, doesn't have anything like that at all.
Are you also looking to favor the city take over that aspect of being a building? Code enforcement or.
I would, I would like to see the city take that back, but it's unlikely we should do so until we have. Someone who we can basically have on retainer or on call as a, as an engineer. Cause the way our code's written right now, I, I could be, or I could designate somebody to be our building inspector. And when they get beyond their knowledge and scope of understanding. Our code currently says we can hire that expertise and pass that on, that expense on to. The person who's. So we've already got the pieces in there, we just need the person to.
Right, it works good with the county, but they don't, they have enough paperwork to deal with that they don't have on specific. In-house codes or ordinances, so that's.
I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's a glaring example, um, of what can happen, so.
I have a, I have a thought for it. We have so many ordinances and they are so screwed up. The concept of scheduling workshops to try and tackle it. Is disheartening.
It's, it's daunting.
So.
Overwhelming.
Here's what I would propose. I know this won't go real quick, but at least it's steady. Every agenda, starting ordinance one or the first ordinance that's still valid. We put every ordinance on the agenda, one, two, three, four, five, and we all commit to reading the ordinance in full as it's sent out as part of the packet. So we walk in having read it and then you can say, sounds good to me, I have no changes, I want to strike the whole thing. And it doesn't mean that we need to hash it all out there, but at least that way in terms of review and say, well, we've gone through twelve of them now. And you guys talked about striking three of them. We could either, if it's listed as an action item, we could, if the ordinance is just all bad, we could vote to strike at that meeting. Or we could start to assemble together a package of things, but I worry with larger documents like the handbook. We could get distracted of, well, it says this here and it says this here and oh, there's another bad thing here and let's just ta- start taking bites out of it.
And I mean, the ones that are. The ones that need to be stricken are glaringly obvious. There's, there's references from the twenties that we will. Support and have a fireman's fund or something like that. Well, that's been gone for decades, so. Every city has rules on their books that are obsolete and wrong and sometimes hilarious by today's standard.
Hopefully a lot of them, we could just vote to strike.
Yeah. So, okay, so no schedule, we'll just.
Well, that's one person's opinion. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
Well, yeah, it'd give a place to engage in an orderly fashion. Instead of just pick out, you know, just reaching a pile and pull out and it'd be an orderly fashion and engagement, so I I'm not opposed to that.
And I can.
Maybe a couple or at least, at least one, but maybe.
Yeah, we could even, we could do two, if it goes well, we could do two or even three, but you start at the older numbers, you're gonna get them theoretically the less relevant ones. Hopefully the ones we passed recently with the higher numbers don't need as much attention, so.
Exactly, so, and I'm more than happy to. Send everybody the current code, the codified, the ordinances that are codified. We can send that out to.
I would like that.
Okay, and when you read it, you read a paragraph or a sentence that just makes no sense, at the bottom of that, it it basically shows the ordinance. That created that piece of the code and so we know we need to look at that one, so I'll send it out to everybody.
I can, I can grab it for you here too.
Yeah, if you got it, it's the September twenty-four version.
I'll grab it off the shared drive.
Okay. Okay. Um, additions to the agenda, snow removal.
Yeah, okay, so this is a little different than last time I brought this up a few weeks back. Um, this one's more about, I was approached by businesses that had open questions as to. Who's responsible for removing the snow on the sidewalks down Main Street? Because I believe, and this is where it gets. Yeah, or the main, the main, yes.
The main drag.
Because I think historically, if I understand this correctly, we had that little lawnmower with the brush on front and Scotty would hop on that and he'd zip around town and. Do stuff and that was what people could typically expect because that's just what always happened. I don't get the impression that was ever codified. And then I think that lawnmower thing with the brush is gone, yeah. So we don't have anything that is as quick right now for doing such things and. We had public works changes, Devon and Derek, and then, you know, there was a lot of turnover. And now there's an open question of regardless of whether the answer is yes or no, can we get a definitive answer on who's responsible for it? And I said, I can't give you a definitive answer. I don't, I don't know really what that is.
The clerks were actively addressing that question this week. There is within our codes, it clarifies out in the residential areas. That the homeowner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their place, but it doesn't, there's nowhere in there could they find anything that specifically addresses. The commercial district, if you will. So it is an area that we do need to get addressed one way or another. As far as equipment, uh, Public Works has been pretty enterprising and they've taken a small tractor. And fitted a blade from another machine that doesn't work anymore and put it on the front and then they got a tank off of another machine. Hooked a sprayer unit up to it, so they actually were plowing the sidewalk and spraying de-icer down it. It worked pretty good. So that did happen at times during this last snow. But there's nothing that said we had to or that we don't have to. The question on a state level is to sit, you know, who's responsible? I think the purpose of having ordinances that tell businesses, somebody had to be something, I think, from Wilbur. And it's very legalistic and it's very clear that the businesses are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their buildings. To keep them clear of snow and mud and other debris, so.
From a state perspective?
No, from, from Wilbur has.
I'm guessing that's true in Davenport too, at least y'all, we see the businesses shoveling the snow.
Yeah, the, the reason they got Wilbur is because that was actually in the MRSC's website to look at as an example. Of someone else's code.
Yeah.
So. But we don't have anything in Arlington that tells us one way or the other. It would, it would probably fall on. The ultimate, I think city sidewalks fall on the responsibility of the city unless the city. Passes that responsibility on.
Well, I don't know if it's.
I think it's, I I would like it to be clarified. You know, and that's, that's kind of a council thing to get that clarified, how, who and what's gonna be responsible for keeping. Sidewalks clear on, on third.
I look at it, who, a liability issue, okay?
Liability issues, it's a pleasant.
Liable for all that. If the city doesn't do a job or, you know. Breaks down, leaves a tire chain out there and somebody comes and get wrapped up in the dark or, you know, they come back to see the city.
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be liability anyway, in any way, it's just.
There's just a shift of the right responsibility of the liability.
I haven't seen a municipality that has addressed this, that hasn't put it squarely on the owners of the, the adjacent property owners. To keep the sidewalk in front of their space clean.
Jesus, Diva. Do I really want to?
I didn't.
Okay. Done.
No, the code.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's. That's what we've been doing, so Ken said that with that new machine, it didn't take him very long at all. But, you know, we've also been without Public Works, so quite honestly, one of the mornings, um, Cindy Hazy and myself. Did that whole block over there when they were having, the day that the kindergarteners were walking down for that hundred. did that whole block over there when they were having, the day that the kindergarteners were walking down for the hundredth day of school. We cleared the sidewalks.
Give them all a shovel.
Unfortunately, it was light enough, I just needed to push boom, and I was able to do it, and we got it done.
That was, the school was using us for free labor.
Yeah, right, so that's back when it wasn't illegal.
Yeah.
So, to give an answer, then it sounds like in the, in the absence of having discovered anything, the closest application is what we talk about, what is the wording about residential owners? Does the wording in our ordinances specifically say that it's residential owners? Okay, so businesses not specified one way or another?
Correct.
And the city does have some, owned some of that sidewalk, too, or in front, the building sitting on it, yeah.
Memorial Hall, the library.
I think that's how they got away with it.
The park, I mean, the town square, and I, and I brought that up to Ken, and he's like going, I'm out here doing this already, you know, it's, doesn't take anymore to just, another thirty seconds to run further up the sidewalk, so. But for me, it's a matter of who's liable and who's responsible.
Well, as far as, cause I know most of the stuff in the city is gonna be priority, is bus routes.
As far as.
It's gonna be removal, so manpower, when are you gonna be able, cause when can you get to it?
Yeah.
So, I see it both ways, I mean, jeez. Put in heated sidewalks, you don't have to worry about it.
Well, I've got an idea for that, too.
I know.
So, what, what did? Because the, so technically, doesn't the city own, like if, if the sidewalk gets damaged and whatever else?
Well, who's responsible for it?
Cause the, the business owner doesn't actually own the sidewalk, right, with right-of-ways and everything, the city owns the sidewalk.
So, right-of-way law is, even our attorney says it is a very interesting, weird thing. So, a right-of-way is technically, technically it is owned by the property owner.
Correct.
But it is under control of the municipality.
It is basically permission for the municipality or utilities to use it.
Yeah, so that's the technical side of it. But we all know that if the sidewalk over there gets damaged, we're most.
Well, right, I guess I'm just saying from a practical standpoint, the liability that we're concerned with is, I mean, if, if he, he's going down in front of Memorial Hall, he decides to continue on, and what happens that's the liability problem?
Smack somebody coming out of the car for the show?
Well, there's, there's that, or, so, snow removal is a huge problem, especially in my industry, trying to cover people doing it.
Sure.
Cause they'll go through, you know, these guys will come through a sidewalk or a parking lot, and they will completely clear it. And they'll even put de-icer down, and the weather changed twenty minutes later, and it snows harder or freezes harder, and somebody trips and falls. And it doesn't matter the fact that it was absolutely perfectly clear twenty minutes ago, it's still have a trip and fall incident. So it's kind of a damned if you do and damned if you don't situation.
I agree.
So, in other words, you're saying it's not as much about what happens when the person, when our employee is actually caring for the sidewalk? It's the fact that the last person to have cared for the sidewalk is us.
Right, or it's, I mean, even, even out here, you know, we've swept it, but then the building owner has come over and made sure that there's ice melt put down, too. You know, and it still freezes and.
Or this would come up, a snowstorm, somebody goes in to get a pizza and slips on it, nothing's been, who are the, who are the, who is the person? Probably gonna sue both the city and the business, so.
That doesn't happen.
No, no.
People take responsibility for their own actions.
You, you can get free water out there. No, I mean, that's, that's the question you gotta ask yourself.
Yeah, no, it's, I've got.
It's a convenience thing.
Fall clean is going right now in my agency, so.
I mean, it's a funny, strange world we live in, but that's just a simple, hard fact. But I look at it, too, there, there's that liability of it, but there also is the time issue with it and the workforce.
I think for the purpose of this conversation, it's, really boils down to who's responsible for at least attempting to get it clear.
I think we just need to decide whether we're gonna do it or not.
Right.
And damn the liability, it's just.
That's basically what.
For fifteen minute, if you can keep it, or whatever, of sounding boards.
I mean, setting, setting liability aside, if it's being done by a motor, I'd say just do it. If our machine is broken down, I'm not saying that our public work should be out there shoveling it. We probably have a responsibility to do that in front of our own properties, but I don't think we can make any generous offers to anyone when we don't have the ability to just zip down there.
And fortunately, this was relatively light, it's no fault, I mean, what if we had a foot, I'm, I'm not convinced that tractors can be able to push a foot of snow down the sidewalk, so.
Right, and I've seen this, where the city, yesterday years, would, would just do in front of that, and they wouldn't do in front of the grocery store, the grocery store and bank did their home.
Well, yeah, and every time I came out, the grocery store was already cleared.
You're gonna have.
Everybody else.
So, I, I personally don't like this, oh, hell, just go keep, I like it spelled out, who, who's gonna do it? I guess that's the agreement.
That's kind of what Creighton's saying, are we gonna do it, or are we not gonna do it, and then we, and then we follow that.
You know, cause I guarantee you in a snowstorm or an event like that, they're gonna be busy doing other stuff, and you're gonna have some, possibly some storefronts that are, or whatever, hounding them to get mine first, it just works that way. You know, and.
So it sounds like we'll need a resolution.
We need more than that, probably.
Or we could drag out the, the ordinance that talks about snow removal at residences, and see if that's just something that can be modified or clarified.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Is that the first one you're gonna pull out? I mean, how buried is it?
It's, fortunately, the codes are a searchable document, so. Okay, um, and then we have Memorial Hall leaks to review.
Yeah, there's at least two ceiling leaks.
Okay.
Is, have they done any, they had a, a garbage can under one of them.
Okay, um, I don't know that anybody has been on the top of that building.
Okay.
Were they at the main floor or the kitchen?
No, on the main floor.
On the main floor.
Same place that it's, same place that it's leaked, the one that it's leaked for years.
Which is disheartening, because that roof was, I mean, I haven't seen it up there, but it was after the windstorm that we had that caused damage to it. They had to rebuild a bunch of it, there was a big piece of the roof that was repaired as part of that, so that must, it must not have reached that far.
So, right, pretty much middle, east and west and on the north side, and then it would look like there was water on the stage, too, didn't it? But it did to me, I didn't walk over there and look.
Too, I will ask.
That's, if you come to the Lions Club meeting, your table will be right under that leak.
Okay, absolutely.
Speaking of buckets.
That's where the president's at.
City, old city hall, upstairs.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Just making sure those have been cleared after this recently.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, flat roof says it all.
Yeah, it's true.
And they spent a good couple, two, three days on top of the library last summer putting.
Goop on it.
Well, they, first they found a number of places where the metal had been lifting, so they got the sealable deck screws. They screwed down the top, and then they put the stuff over the top of it, and they thought they had it nailed.
It didn't, huh?
It's not, not in those spots, so.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so I will, what I will do is outlast Public Works to, to take a hard look at that, where is it coming from, and, and see if they can't. They've gotta have some of that seal left in its fifties, so they can put something up there right now, it's not like it's twelve degrees out, it should work.
It's been doing that in the same place, I bet, for, on and off for ten years, anyway.
Memorial Hall?
Yeah, in the same place.
Slowly losing the same panel one to the other.
Yeah.
They say we're gonna run out of those coastal panels.
What's on that roof, is it a tire, or is it a?
It's of the metal, I think.
Probably a membrane with a.
Well, I thought it, I, when we were putting the lights up, but I wasn't on the bucket truck this time. For some reason, I'm thinking it's metal. Like Delta rib. On a, on a pitch, it's not perfectly flat.
Yeah.
It leans.
Yeah, it leans to the back, yeah, towards the alley, but for some reason, that seems like that's what that is.
Okay. Okay. With each sheet of metal, instead of being like this at the pitch, it's like that.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I just heard that, FYI, that from the roofers that put a metal roof up, that they recommend every six months to a year go up there and tuck the screw down again. And I go, that's not gonna be fine, especially a three-twelve or something.
Okay, oh man, after a while, wouldn't their heads snap on?
You'd have to be extremely.
Clutch.
Yeah, not that we need to discuss that here, but the guys that put my solar panels on, they just look to make sure that the washers are still compressed. And as long as they're still compressed, they, they say that the roof is fine, at least in their.
You get a VSB lock ribbon, you don't have to worry about that.
There you go.
Um, so question, I left the observe the check register out of the consent agenda. And I don't know if it needs to be or not, it can be in there.
Well, the.
Well, it's observable.
Observe is, is not a, the consent agenda is for approval.
So, here is that, cause it doesn't need to be signed.
Was there?
So that's the check register that you guys approved, must go around.
Move to approve the consent agenda, second.
We had a meeting on the twelfth, and we have a thirteenth, I mean, so.
I'm sorry, that was Steven and Creighton?
Yes, it was Steven and Creighton.
Here we have the first and the second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you guys for bringing that up, I didn't know that existed, that is awesome. Okay, mayor's comments. Okay, I'll just zip through these kind of, these are more of an update than comments, uh, well, when I'm still waiting for a formal estimate for the project, he's looking for all kinds of information about when it was drilled, and how long ago it was repaired, and all the rest of it, and that information is tough to find, so.
I could add, add to that, Wells, there's supposed to be a book around here that has a former mayor, or one of the mayor, Paul Gilman.
Okay.
Had documented just about, from what I was told, everything you wanna know about the Wells.
Okay.
And I don't know if you can ask a former clerk, but somewhere there's a book that, Well Info, that has a total of information on it.
I will, there's a wealth of stuff still over.
Okay.
So, I'll go here, I've already been on one hunt for a book back from years ago, and I've found the bloody thing, so. See if I can go, you know, bat a thousand on that one, so, thank you for that. Uh, last week, we had a pre-bid meeting for the wastewater treatment plant rebuild, uh, it was fairly well attended. I would say probably we had four contractors there that were scoping out the site and asking questions, and so that is well on its way. We have made some, what I consider to be pretty reasonable progress on identifying cemetery endowment fund principal. Identifying those pockets of money specifically for the principal, but figure out the interest later, we're just trying to find that, that number to start. The advertisement for the twenty-twenty-five meter rear has been put in, I almost think we should have it like a beauty show pageant.
Combine it with Miss Harrington.
Maybe Miss Harrington can.
Did they do that?
There you go.
Public service.
I think they do have one, one applied, didn't they?
I have my mom's Miss Harrington sash, can I be?
You could do it.
Bring that discount. Water discount.
That discount.
The sash with the mustache?
Yeah, last item was the conversation with the city attorney about a resolution being thrown up about the cemetery building. He said.
MOU, not resolution.
But he said, quite honestly, it's more, uh, it's more appropriate to have the donors write a letter saying, okay, we've done that to the city.
Think that will be, and just for information, the Bryan Foundation just donated the money to the Lions Club. So they're out of the picture on this.
Okay.
So, and probably at some point, I need to come down and get a check from the city and give it to the Lions Club, or I'll have the treasurer come down.
Is there any specific verbiage you wanted us to include in that?
No, just, just basically that.
Wanted them to.
You go.
Okay.
Here, here you are, welcome, so.
Okay.
That was all I had. Um, any comments from our public gallery?
Do you guys have any questions, or, I know that, um, at our last commissioner meeting, we changed the speed limit sign going out of Harrington on the Harrington Tokyo Road.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, yeah, so rather than being on the south end of the cemetery, it's gonna be moved out, and I don't know if the signage has been done or not yet, I know about three days ago it wasn't.
Forced away if it didn't.
Yeah, exactly.
The twenty-five mile an hour speed though?
Uh-huh, yeah, so, um.
Way over.
It's way over, okay, just leave her there, we moved it out to the boundary of the golf course. So, to slow everybody down, so, and then same thing as you're going south out of town, so the speed limit can be increased past the golf course, so.
Just moving those signs.
Yeah, rather than, yeah, from the cemetery, and then we did a swap for the stop sign going down into Harrington, right? At, um, off the Harrington Tokyo Road in twenty-three, so up by, um, oh, by the, the Catholic Church parsonage. We, we replaced a sign there as well, so.
That was, that was a stop ahead.
Stop ahead sign.
Yeah, cause the one that was there was completely faded, uh, and the twenty-five mile an hour sign that we had here in town was actually.
Itty-bitty.
Really tiny.
So, that was, and, and I was literally trying to find the larger current sign when Joe called and. The state has a sign-making shop in, which is awesome, if they would ever return phone calls.
Sharp Line or National Barricade, I thought, but definitely Sharp Line Spokane does a lot.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's lots of companies allowed to do it, I was starting to get it done cheaper than seventy-five dollars.
Well, and this sign was thirty, thirty-eight dollars is what I was told, and then the county donated it, cause technically that's, uh, we can maintain that as well, and.
No bullet holes in it?
There is no bullet holes, and rather than saying stop ahead, like the old one, I think there's a, an arrow and then a stop sign. Yeah, so it does look a little bit different, but it's new and shiny and reflective and.
I don't think, I just went out the road today, but I know it's been missing for a couple of years, Rockland Road, leaving Harrington.
Uh-huh.
Oh, I got that in my garage, I'm on it.
The fifty mile an hour sign is not there. As you're coming up over the hills, perhaps.
I'll mention that.
That, that, there's not one there, cause that road is fifty and then. Usually you take Cross Highway twenty-eight, and above the hill, freezes around the right.
There used to be a fifty mile an hour sign out there.
That's fifty, that road is fifty.
I'll mention that.
Yeah, does it do any good, I don't know, but nobody knows, doesn't care, but it's missing.
I plead the fifth.
It's missing, okay, sounds good.
Okay, well, with that.
I thought of two things I should have put on. We thought of two things I should have put on additions to the agenda, real quick. Uh, one is I wanted to thank the mayor for cleaning up a overtly racist piece of graffiti that was put on the sidewalks in the last couple of weeks.
Oh, up there, I saw that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, hopefully you can't see it anymore.
So thank you for getting on that, and that is disheartening that that is occurring in our community. Um, and then second of all, I can't remember, did I give a report, or did any of us that went to the Opera House meeting give a report in our last meeting?
No.
Okay. Just real quick, all we did was, where we tried to keep it to, anyway, exactly what we told, said we were going to do in this meeting, was to go there and invite their interest to say, are they interested in purchasing the old city hall? And they said that they were going to start working on formulating questions and talk to us, I don't know, it was a little unclear whether that would, it might be talking to our public works people, or the mayor, or they might come see us at a council meeting, I don't know if any of those three has happened.
No. Well, I can't speak for Public Works, they've not brought that to my attention.
Okay, but they, there was, it was verbalized in the meeting that there is interest, so...
If we decided to...
Yes, and, and I, I made it very clear that, you know, this is not a promise that the council would vote for whatever proposal or any proposal, it's just, we would like to start talking about it.
Yeah, explore the option.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sir.
Man, I don't believe...
I know you're late.
Okay, for the motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.